All right, folks, it's one thirteen and I'll, we're gonna return from recess. We are at city clerk. And I will start with Ms. McPherson. If you have any questions on city clerk.
Only, only one quick one.
Is your mic on? Jim, are the mics on? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the light was on, but I couldn't hear. Education training, I just noticed is up one hundred and forty-seven percent. Is that because assistant clerk or what made the difference this year over the previous?
That's exactly what it is too. She has started her certification training with the Georgia Minister of Clerks Institute. And the purpose of that too is we're planning on her being my replacement because I'll be retired in just a few years.
No, we can't let you do that.
So that's what the, it may not be that much less, it's just depending with COVID. And plus, I've already got the master certification and I included training for me. But if there's no classes there, I won't be attending it. So I really don't expect it to be that much. But I went ahead and included and estimated a couple of conferences for me. But it's really depending on if there's anything there that I can take that I haven't already completed.
And Teresa working towards certification.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's all I, that's all I want, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Phone and internet is up a thousand dollars over the previous year. I'm guessing we're not using the phones or internet anymore or less, it's just a monthly fee, so is that?
That also includes cell phones. I actually got a city cellphone about a year or so ago so that the council can contact me on a city cellphone instead of a personal phone. And Teresa also has added one on that.
Okay, and contract labor, thirteen thousand dollars?
That is election selection. The election cost comes up under the city clerk and we have a municipal election this year.
Okay.
And we pay both counties.
Mr. Montahan? Okay, all right.
Also, in response to the phone and internet question, because you might see it later. When we, when it comes to our sync global bill, we divide that for the departments based on the number of people. So since they've added Teresa, they now get to pay a bigger portion of the city hall bill.
Okay.
That sounds very good. All right, we're gonna move on to finance. Ms. McPherson?
I have one on page forty-four. Which is the last page. I was just trying to figure out with the attorney fees, why year-to-date, ten months, I mean, we just were easy on David this year or what? At ten months, he's at fifty-four, but we've been budgeting ninety to ninety-five the last couple of years.
Tom, do you, are you prepared to talk on that? Or Sarah, you all have been looking at the invoices.
I mean, we're paying him straight hourly based on everybody's rates. So it's just a function of how much time they're spending on this.
Are they behind, you know how current they are?
That's what I was pulling up.
That's probably.
It's, it's a month and a rears, it looks like.
Okay, but that, that doesn't really make up.
But.
He's, he's got a lot of, lot of, you know, irons in the fire, so we're not the only thing he thinks about.
No, he's like a judge and attorney.
Probably, let's get a little bit more information on that in a subsequent meeting.
It says ten months, but we've only paid through June thirtieth.
Through June thirtieth? Okay, all right, Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
The nineteen percent increase in electricity is the same apportionment of city resources like phone and internet and?
We do allocate it based on people, but we also switched out our, the city hall air conditioner was replaced within the last year. So that, I don't know, could be part of it?
All right, anything else? Mr. Young? All right, Mr. Montahan? All right, let's move on to IT. Ms. McPherson?
I put question mark by travel and training, but I'm not sure why. Actually, maybe it's just the travel, fifteen hundred. I just was thinking that seemed like quite a bit of travel.
So education and training is where we put the class fees. So whether that's in-person or online, any type of registration we put into that education and training. Travel would be mileage, so obviously to and from conferences, it'd be hotel rooms. But also mileage, if he has to go somewhere else to pick up a part or whatever, so.
Okay, so the travel would include daily type stuff? In addition to if there's training conference, that sort of thing?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Carter?
A big jump in the group insurance, did we add someone?
Finance went down twenty-five percent in that and IT went up twenty-six percent, so I thought there was a personnel change?
Yeah, the group insurance just jumped twice what it used to be, so what happened? What caused that?
Yes, so we have, Teresa is split between city clerk and IT, but this looks like she's fully in IT.
So y'all are aware, she's doing two part-time positions. We created a part-time position for IT and she just fills that, that role. So go ahead. You got it all under IT?
Finance went down.
But city clerk is the same, so I need, we need to look at that.
Group insurance for finance went down twenty-five percent.
All right, so we also need to talk about group insurance as a whole. That one specifically we need to look at because it should only be one and a half of each, is that? Okay, so let me start from the top with group insurance. So in the past, we have allocated based on the individual's selections. So whether they were single, employee spouse, employee child, employee family, there's four options for the employees. So when y'all have seen changes in the past, it could have been because maybe we hired somebody different and now they have a family plan instead of the previous person only having employee spouse. So I know in the past, we've had to say, well, there's been some fluctuation because either the person chose differently or they are, we've hired somebody different. So what, in talking to Jennifer and Tom, we've come up with a different way to allocate it so that we don't see as much fluctuation based on the individuals. So this year, we've taken, we have a spreadsheet with the individuals and what their selections are. And that gives us our total cost, you know, looking at, like she's mentioned earlier, we have the eleven percent increase. All of that, the estimate, what our insurance is gonna cost us. And then we divide it by the number of employees. So we have kind of a, a unit cost per employee for our insurance. Instead of saying finance costs more because they have more people with children or police costs less because we have more single people. So instead of y'all seeing the fluctuation necessarily based on the individual selections, like I said, we have created a unit cost this year. Uh huh, so we might see a bigger fluctuation this year, but going forward, you'll only see whatever it is that the, so if the insurance increase is three percent next year, then that's what you're gonna see in the departments. Instead of a twenty-six percent increase because now we hired somebody with kids instead of the person previously who, who was only employee spouse.
Okay, well, I'm glad you explained that because I had not heard that before and I don't, initially, I'm not excited about it. But since we are partially self-insured, it makes sense that we would do it that way because it actually provides some anonymity to what's going on across the departments and across you know, the, our insurance platform.
That, that too, because in the departments that have two people, it's like, oh, well, now we've hired Teresa. What is, you know, you could see the impact of one person instead of, well, we've always had two people budgeted in this department and we don't, from, from the political standpoint, we don't care whether they had employee family or employed only.
Right, well, and also from the cost standpoint, so the way you're doing it works, I just didn't know it and I don't think we knew it. All right, Ms. McPherson, is that all you have?
Yeah, I don't have. I don't have anything again till page fifty-three, which is in community development.
Okay, Mr. Carter?
I'm fine, what's that?
Mr. Young?
I'm good with that.
Mr. Montahan? Okay, let's move on to human resources. Ms., Ms. McPherson has nothing here, Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Nothing.
Mr. Montahan? All right, we're gonna move to customer service. Ms. McPherson has nothing here, Mr. Carter?
Customer service, is this a department, a new department that's been here a while? I don't remember customer service.
This, yeah, this is what we've called the ladies up in the Georgia Power Building.
Okay.
So this is, we have a manager, we have two full-time customer service representatives, we have two meter readers, and that's who's in this department.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Young?
Under technical, the text my gov went into, into customer service rather than IT?
Yes. Well, and as Jennifer alluded to in the past, that's what we've used all the robocalls and things is generally we're alerting people of being cut off or there's a water leak, but.
Bull water advisory?
Bull water advisory, correct, so, yeah, I mean, I guess that's something we could consider since it might not only be used for that going forward.
Be kinda hard to split that out and it is customer service.
I would try to apportion it how you use the, the technology.
Mr. Montahan?
Yeah, no, that was my question too, but it seems like that might fall maybe into a new department called Communications if we do this PIO.
It's possible we could look at it then. All right.
I was just gonna say, that, that had been my only question in that section and we had kinda covered it. I expect we'll be learning more about it as we move forward, but we had talked about it previously.
All right, let's move on to community development, Ms. McPherson?
On fifty-four, I've noticed, let's see. Oh, it's clear, some of the changes are clear because the way the engineer was paid out of Public Works and all that. So that's explained in the notes, that's great. Education and training is up eight thousand, that's two hundred and thirty-three percent. Is that also because, I put numerous employees, question mark, because there are numerous employees in that department? And would that also have to do with the, we moved, we moved side inspector from Public Works to Community Development, that might be part of it too. Is it just the number of employees we've got in there because it's a good group?
No, it includes the HPC board and the planning and zoning.
Oh, and that too, see, so HPC.
Two employees, Chris and Ron.
All right.
The other two.
And Chris and Ron.
All right, that clarifies that. You got anything else, Ms. McPherson?
Um, no.
All right, Mr. Carter?
I'm professional, I noticed that we were spending money all the way up to this projected next year and there's nothing in there. Why is that?
The two thousand twenty-one budget included the transportation plan that we did.
Yeah.
So twenty, I'm sorry, twenty was the transportation study and twenty-one is the LCI.
How much was the transportation study? About a hundred?
A hundred, a hundred and four, I think.
Yeah.
So we're three years from professional services for community?
For this year, yes.
Okay, for next year?
Yeah.
This is next year's budget.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Carter?
No.
All right, Mr. Young?
Although it's not represent, it's not represented here, but you had community development software as a capital request. Can you tell me what that software does?
The, the software was a comprehensive software that would interact with all aspects of community development, including zoning, building permits, business licenses, everything. And it would be able to keep track of it in real time. We, you know, that's a lot of money for, for a software package, so.
It has benefits.
We're using a software now that is a bare-bones software and we're getting by with it, so.
But maybe something we need to look at in the future, in future budgets. Okay, all right, Mr. Young, anything else? All right, Mr. Montahan?
I guess that software is kinda more like what Fulton County uses, where you can, anybody can just log in and see real-time updates on permitting and everything?
Yeah, plan review, it includes everything, plan review, zoning applications, the whole, you know, the whole nine yards, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, so I think I, we, so the education and training line item, the eight thousand dollars, that includes training for the boards, is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that honestly. All right, yeah, that was my question, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. McPherson?
Is that PMZ too, or I caught HPC?
HPC and PMZ, yes.
And PMC, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to building inspections. Ms. McPherson? Page fifty-five.
The only one I have in there, I just said, please explain, education and training, it's up a hundred and, one thousand two hundred and thirty-three percent, man, I'm gonna have to get magnifying glass here.
So it's from four hundred to six thousand, Bobby.
It's not tons of money, it's because it was such a small amount that it's up. Is this mainly to get our, everybody building inspectors up to snuff and everything?
We have two level five building inspectors, which level five is the highest level that you can get. You can inspect anything being constructed. These two guys have to have certification, recertification, training, ongoing, and that's pretty much what this is.
Okay, anything else, Ms. McPherson?
No, that's it.
All right, Mr. Carter?
We're doing more running around and gasoline, diesel and all this up high. The fuel service calls.
Well, with, with, with hiring these two individuals, we, we ended up purchasing two new vehicles.
Oh, okay.
And.
Free Sam's, okay.
All right, Mr. Young?
I'm good.
Mr. Montahan?
I'm fine.
All right, let's move on to code enforcement. Guess Bobby will stay right there, Ms. McPherson?
Would you just clarify for me, we have three full-time, not two and a half, is that correct?
No, ma'am, that's not correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, here it is, wait, 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 okay, two full, one part-time. Got it, I'm sorry, I see it. Okay, so two and a half is correct. Are we, I know we've been really wanting to tighten, tighten this department up. Are we getting our bang for a buck with who we got in there and how? I, I've seen the reorg, at least from my side, city manager report. I see that we're addressing things that used to just get missed. I'm not having to call them in necessarily, you know what I mean? I'm like, why am I always having to report these? They are picking up things without it necessarily having to be brought to their attention.
We, Tracy Jarvis, our chief building official, has taken code enforcement group back toward the end of March, we started a new program where we would be proactive in a zoned environment here in the city. And yes, you're right, we, we've, we've kicked our program up tremendously since we started. And yeah, we're, we're doing tons more than we ever thought about doing previously.
I actually put an exclamation part, mark next to the education training on that one with a yes, mainly because I felt like there probably was a lack of training and looking at what other cities, what we really can do. So I'm hoping you'll, you'll see that too, we'll see the results.
The, it's very important, if, we're gonna strive to try to get at least a couple of our folks certified through the Georgia Association of Code Enforcement. There's more to the job, obviously, than just going out and writing a ticket. And that was our goal with the training.
Okay, and we met with Tracy the other day, he brought a report of all the cases they've worked on since March. Five hundred and thirty-five cases they've worked on since March.
Yeah, and they're doing like an overview and you can now see if a case is closed and you didn't used to see that, you didn't know the status. And so it has some status, so it's helpful.
All right, Mr. Carter?
Okay, do the political signs follow into code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Do you run around looking for those or you, as people call in, you go check them?
We constantly, if they're out, they're looking for them.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Young?
I'm good.
Mr. Montahan?
Good.
All right, so I'll say in this department, this has been one of my pet peeves all along and everybody knows that. We have come a long way, we have a long way to go. Part of that is tightening up our own ordinances to make it, I don't wanna say easier, but to make the process for these code enforcement officers to get from violation to some sort of correction in the courtroom, and we're working on that too, so, just so everybody knows. All right, we're gonna move on to economic development. Page fifty-nine, Ms. McPherson?
Okay, so we're done with Carol tomorrow, we paid off our, we have no land, so we can't, no land for industrial at this point to build a new industrial park, not that we, well, okay, in this regard. So what's the plan moving forward on economic development? We're gonna still, I assume, be looking for land?
Yep, yep, back in the spring, I guess, y'all approved some money to do some due diligence on the two parcels that we were looking at. And I worked on that with JR to get permission from the owners and then the transition occurred where Daniel resigned and all that happened. So I'm starting up again with this next group, trying to get them up to speed. We had that conversation, I guess, Thursday or Friday of last week, so we'll be, we'll be bringing the results of that when we get it.
But we're, we're not investing any more money toward getting help on this, we're doing it in-house.
There is no money in here for Carol tomorrow.
There's no money in this department period.
Yeah, we, we, we made the last quarterly payment last December. So we haven't made a quarterly payment in a little bit more than six months.
Who is this department under, I mean, with no money, who's, who's running the no-money department?
Just me.
Okay.
Janet, Janet helps, Bobby helps, Pete helps, I mean, you know, everybody tips in and works on it. And then, of course, you know, the Carol tomorrow folks are helping still too. Development Authority is still meeting and working on stuff, so.
There is no money in the budget for, for, in this proposed budget for Carol tomorrow, that's true. But that doesn't mean there won't be some continuing conversation. There is certainly some additional meetings and work going on. And, and we'll see where we end up, but at this moment, there is no money in this budget, in this proposed budget for Carol tomorrow. Okay, is everybody good? I need to get down to list on this one, okay, let's move on. Tourism, I don't see our tourism manager. Page sixty-one, Ms. McPherson?
The B word, butterballs. I know we allocated money last year, since then, we did some clearing. We kinda got the building down to a skeleton and found what was really behind the walls that don't connect and everything. I think there's still some of us, I think it, it's really hard to be picking at other people to clean up their property when we own one of the blightest, most blightest property right there that you can't miss if you drive through the downtown. So do we have a plan of just clearing it out now that we have found out that it's not worth maybe a million bucks to get how much square footage? You said we'd get out of it, we need to have something, maybe we can go up two stories or?
So after we stripped it down and could look at it, staff's recommendation is that we demolish it. But we haven't brought that to council as a vote, so I don't have a consensus from council about what to do. But I have been working with the guys at Falcon to try to come up with some kinda conceptual plan for what that site could be developed as if we did that. And they did one and I didn't like it, and then they did another and I didn't like it. And then they, I don't know, I think they're working on two more now that are possibilities. I probably at least once a quarter have somebody call me about buying it, you know? So, I mean, there's always interest in it. Until we come up with a way that we can actually use it, I'd rather just sit on it, even though it looks bad. If the council, if there's consensus to knock it down, we can go ahead and knock it down. And I would knock down the duplex too, I think, at the same time. Another thing that's happening in parallel with this is that's part of the LCI site, right? The LCI boundary. And so MKSK has brought back some recommendations that sort of are deja vu-ish back to, you know, like when Jeff was the mayor and the first year I was here, we were looking at trying to do a road, either extend cheese down to seventy-eight and tie in the Westview. Or you remember at one point, we were looking at another railroad crossing at Happy Valley and taking sixty-one across the railroad track and coming down Maple? Well, lo and behold, you know, they've come back with concepts with the boat, not one, but both of those in them, which because of the elevation change, were really, really difficult roads to build. There's about a eight to ten to twelve-foot difference in elevation between Montgomery and seventy-eight as you go west, which makes that really difficult. It's a triangular piece of property, there's a billboard on the point of it. I mean, it's, it's a really difficult site, it's not, you know, parking is an issue. So we'll see if the Falcons guys ever come up with a concept that I like, I'm gonna bring it to you and then y'all can say, yeah, you like it, or let's sell it and forget it, or let's build a park, or, I mean, so, I don't know.
Go ahead.
I can't fathom continuing to live year after year with it looking like that. We own it while we tell people to fix their stuff up. I don't know what the consensus is, it's, but I think we need to reach one at some point soon. I didn't, I loved the original plan, everything else, but it became clear to me with our conversations that it was gonna cost an awful lot of money for a little space. And now that we see how that building was put together without the walls connecting and everything else, as hard as it is for me to go down this road, I almost feel like the only way for us to go forward is to level it all.
Another good thing that happened out of this, if you wanna call it good, is we budgeted a half a million dollars last year to do that this year. And we're short half a million dollars in the budget. Right, so revenues are down half a million, so.
Well, let me, let's talk about butterballs for a minute. So this is gonna be a topic in the upcoming retreat, council retreat. And we had been putting off this discussion so that we could have a comprehensive, you know, sort of idea of what's going on. And I understand what you're saying about how it looks now, but we also got it to a place that's way better than where it was, where it had broken doors and windows busted out on it and it was a hazard. So we got it to this place, it's not just that it's gonna cost a lot of money. It's also that even if you invest that money in it, the structure is just not worth preserving at this point. So, you know, we haven't had a lot of discussion about it because we needed to gather a lot more information, but in the retreat, we will, and we'll come to some kinda, some kinda decision there. Mr. Carter?
I hope you go along with, let's clean the property up myself, take care of both buildings. So we have a clean piece of property and not something to look at.
All right, Mr. Young?
The half a million dollars isn't in a capital project for twenty twenty-two. Is that in a bucket that will remain in a, in a bucket for next year or does it disappear?
The one that we have this year?
Well, the five hundred thousand dollars that we put into a bucket for butterballs, does that bucket disappear with this new budget?
They have to vote on it.
So we budgeted, the original thought was a million, half a million this year, half a million for the budget we're discussing. But like Tom said, with revenue being short, half a million this year, if that's, if you choose not to spend it, then it would technically go away. However, all the capital projects that are budgeted this year that are not complete, once we get through the fiscal year, will bring you the rollover where we roll those projects over. So at that point, it'll be up to council whether we wanna roll that over. But if we don't, if we didn't have it because of the revenue shortage, then basically we'd be taking five hundred out of fund balance. Not over, not taking it out of savings from this year, from not spending it this year. We'd basically be reaching further into our fund balance.
Right, and that half a million dollar shortage was in permits and?
Plan review.
Okay, all right.
It's just because we're not building houses.
Right.
We haven't, we haven't issued a building permit in July or August.
Right.
So we're not just slow.
Mr. Young?
I'm stopped.
Is that all?
I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Montahan?
Mr. Young got my question.
All right, good. That's what this is about. I hope they all get caught down there and you end up not being able to ask any.
Yeah, that's where it's going.
We're at, we're at Main Street now, page sixty-three, Ms. McPherson?
Yeah, I keep, seem to keep going back to training for everybody in different cases. Travel is six thousand six hundred, up a hundred and thirty-four percent. Education and training, thirty-five hundred. It's, it's ten thousand, basically ten thousand plus for travel and education, which is more than we have for our whole community development department. So I'm trying to figure out what all that is for. So that includes myself, my coordinator, the DDA board, and the Main Street board.
Okay. Does it?
Does the DDA travel? Because the travel is, is. They certainly could if they had to do training, sure, within the state, sure. Okay, so it's the DDA? Okay, so it's the DDA, it's the Main Street Advisory Board?
Myself and Shannon, our coordinator.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out why it's so different from the other departments on travel? Why it's so much higher than departments that also do training and travel?
Well, we are required from the Department of Community Affairs to do a minimum of thirty-one hours a year.
You and Shannon?
Myself and Shannon.
What about your boards?
They are required to do, once they do their DDA one-on-one training, that is mandatory from the state.
Yeah.
And then the next training for them could potentially be the two-on-one training, which is the next level training. Those meetings are sometimes held at the Downtown Conference, which I just came from last year, I mean, this last week. So that could mean hotel expenses, so on and so forth. So you're breaking it down basically from seven Main Street board members, seven DDA members, and two Main Street staff, so that's quite, that's a lot of folks.
Okay, so Tom, um, Tom, Jennifer?
We're looking.
Is just, here, here, here would be my only recommendation when we need to save money. When I was on planning and zoning, I went to Athens for a training for a day. I came back. DDA training is usually within a day, so let's just look at that. You know, it, 'cause hotel and everything adds up. And if, if I can drive down to noon and then get my, you know, my training. And I know they do some things online, but stuff like DDA, economic development, really is a lot better in person, where you network with people from other cities, much better than online. And I knew Main Street does some webinars, and that's great for some things. But if there's a way to kind of keep that maybe closer to what other departments are doing, that's all.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Yeah.
Mr. Young?
I'm good.
Mr. Montahan?
So I noticed on the, I guess it's the electricity line, it says more concerts than in summer twenty-twenty, but I saw that in tourism too. So how is that like being split up? Like, I guess it's just kind of a, an accounting thing here, where we're just kind of splitting the tourism? Is that what it is? Okay.
Yes, Sharon and I have split all the utility bills between car departments. We split those.
All right. Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
That makes sense. Okay, now we'll move on to Pine Mountain Gold Museum, page sixty-six, Ms. McPherson.
Okay, um, there's four and a half employees, so I'm just trying to look at my notes here. 'Cause I know I had a question on Pine Mountain. Oh, I know, one of the things said that we were bringing in more revenue, we were bringing in more revenue based on the programs and all. I just wanted somebody to explain to us what, what we're doing there that's success. I mean, is that like the Jeep show? I mean, it's bringing in more revenue, whatever it is, so what are we doing? What are we doing over there?
The, um, there's a couple of events that have been dropped, partly COVID-related, partly, you know, trying to weed out the things that are not a good value in terms of revenue versus the work expended. So the Jeep show is, is a keeper. The Ghost Train is probably the focal point of the whole year, and then the Christmas Train. So part of what you're seeing is, I think, the rec, the recognition on Wesley's part that that operation costs a lot of money. I mean, four hundred and something grand is a lot of discretionary money. And so he is working really hard at the, the few events that actually generate some revenue and trying to do them in a way that has a greater profit margin. His limitation out there is that the train and the train track are a constraint that are, is just unworkable. So you, you can't add another car to the train. And you can't, even if you were to increase the performance of the engine, the track is a problem because it's not flat. And it wasn't built flat because of the rock out there. So in order to fix the problem, we would have to expend a huge amount of Douglas Sphlost to, to accomplish that. And so right now, what he's doing is just trying to get as much volunteer help out there as he can and to focus on the events that actually have the best participation. So he's, he's trying, but I mean, that, when you get down to it, Pine Mountain is a park. It's not Six Flags. It's highly field trip, educational groups, whether it's home schools or public schools. And there's a limit to what you're gonna generate from panning for gold or buying stuff in the shop or, I mean, just think about what the, what a philosophy statement the shop makes. Like, where do you see a shop like that? Cracker Barrel, Disney, Universal. I mean, you know, the kind of place where you go in and you walk through something and then you, you come out through a shop? I mean, that's sort of, that's sort of that, that philosophy of business, right? I mean, who else does that? You know, so I mean, you can see that he's, he's trying to make, to take advantage of the foot traffic. But, I mean, how many eight-year-olds are gonna spend money, or ten-year-olds, or twelve-year-olds? I'm not even sure he gets twelve-year-olds, maybe tens. So, I mean, it's, it's a, I think it's something that we have to talk about every year because it's, it's an integral part of the community from one standpoint. There's a small group of people that wear it out, right? They go out there and walk and there's people that, you know, live and die to take their grandkids out there and ride the train. I mean, you know, we've been there long enough that you, you've got some family tradition out there now. But is it worth four hundred grand net? You know, only if we've got the money.
And I know, I know we can't, it's not gonna be a moneymaker. I think we were trying to make it less of a black hole. I hate to use that term because, to be honest, I know it provides a lot of pleasure for people. I'm not a kid, but I miss the goats. I miss the goats. I go by and go, there's no goat, right? The animals and stuff. And that may be down the road again, but it seemed to me at least the effort was being made there and that it was yielding some benefits from whatever, whether it's the volunteer or trying to find a way to just do the things that maybe make a little more money.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has faulted the effort out there one time since I've been here. But whether we've, what we've done out there has been smart, I think is open to review. 'Cause not everything we've done out there, the way we built the building where it has problems with storm water, infiltration in the back is a problem. The way we built the train is a prob, the train track is a problem. The money that we spent on the train, I think, is questionable whether that was a good investment. So, you know, it's sort of got a checkered history.
All right, Mr. Carter.
We need to find a way to improve upon it. Maintenance and repair of the equipment has jumped up to twenty-five thousand.
The train.
The engine.
The train, okay, I guess the labor and all goes along with that.
Yeah, I think they were planning on doing some significant train repairs.
Okay, what about the gift shop down here at the bottom, supplies? That jumped up a lot too. Went to seventeen thousand.
Yeah, if you look at twenty-twenty, we spent a little over fifteen thousand. We're trying to get back to pre-COVID levels now that we're opening back up fully.
And if I can?
Artifacts and museum display, what, what's going on with that?
So those are things that Wesley is getting to include in the display cases at the, in the, inside the actual museum.
Small equipment, how's that figuring?
Artifacts.
Right below the artifacts is small equipment.
Oh, so this, for that, he, this, this would be your, anything related to the computer? Looks like they're trying to get a laptop or a tablet out there, so small equipment.
They're trying to make the ticketing function mobile.
Okay.
Danny, in regards to like the concession and like gift shop stuff, since they weren't operating hardly at all that one year, but on top of that, the good thing about that is it's not just spending. People buy that stuff so that money, that's not how much we're, we spend it, but we get stuff back when they purchase or they pan and that sort of thing.
All right, uh, Mr. Young?
I'm good.
Mr. Montahan?
Uh, yeah, I just have a couple of questions. My questions are more about, I guess, congruency. So, you know, in the personnel for the overtime, if you look back to twenty-seventeen, we've never had a year where our actuals were as low as a thousand dollars. And in twenty-twenty-one, we budgeted a thousand dollars, but our actual was twenty-three, twenty-three. But yet we're coming back again and trying to budget a thousand dollars. I mean, why do we, that number doesn't seem to have ever worked since twenty-seventeen, so.
Right.
And then on the contract and labor, um, so we budgeted thirteen-four and we're currently at eleven-nine-five-three. And the twenty-five, thirty-three fifty that we budgeted looks to be more in line with twenty-twenty and twenty-nineteen. So what's going on there? I mean, why, why did it look like we were on target with the thirteen-four for twenty-twenty-one? Looks like we're in that range 'cause we have two more months. But we're jumping back up to twenty-five again and?
So?
Was that the train labor?
No, contract labor is our program, so Ghost Train, the Winter Wonderland Train, and Jeep Show Train, or the Jeep Show. And so I'm looking at Wesley's request. And so for instance, six thousand of it is Winter Wonderland actors and support personnel. Eight thousand of that is Ghost Train actors and support personnel. Uh, this year, we're adding a butterfly exhibit with intent for the Gold Rush Festival.
Okay.
So that's five thousand for that.
And I guess in, so the thirteen-four from twenty-one is just we expected less because of COVID?
Yes, we budgeted revenues less, we budgeted expenditures less for COVID.
So we're trying to make a return back. I mean, that makes sense to me, and that's kind of what I thought. But I just kind of also looked at the fact that, you know, between now and October first, we're not having a Ghost Train. We're not having, like, it seems like we were pretty much on target, but?
There is a structural difference now because when I got here, we were using a contractor for Ghost Train and Christmas. And so that was like a fifty-fifty.
No, it was worse than that.
Fifty-fifty revenue split.
Okay.
And, and the contractor was employing people to the extent that they were paid. Now, we get a hundred percent of the revenue, but a hundred percent of the expenses.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, everything should have stepped up together, but the net should be better because we control the whole thing now.
Prior to that, we were doing more with volunteers too. I remember going over there and volunteering, and a lot of the people were.
Yeah, and we have, I think if, I think if you go out there this, this October and walk around, and especially if you go over there a little early before it starts, when they're getting ready, and ask how many, ask Wesley to point out how many of the people are volunteers, you'll be really surprised at the number of people that just really have a passion for just scaring the devil out of people for free.
Right.
And they, and they spend hundreds of dollars of their own money on the costing.
Really?
Right? Janet, help me, is that not what we're hearing? I mean, people just, some people just really like that.
And when we did the budget last year, we anticipated not necessarily being able to open up the Ghost Train and the Winter Wonderland. And we were able to at reduced capacity, and it sold out almost every night. So that's why your budget looked different from your actuals in some of those, those cases too. Okay, now I want to point out that we are at three minutes till two, and two o'clock was the time we had set for this. I'm willing to stay, but I want everyone to be cognizant of that if you want to, you know, maybe change your priority for, for moving through this. But I'm at police next.
I'm afraid if we don't go through it, we'll be going through it some other time, so.
Yeah, it's very possible. Let's, let's see where we're at though. Page sixty-nine, Ms. McPherson. Well, seventy.
Uh, on page seventy, I understand why fuel is up, fuel costs, that's normal. Travel, eight thousand. Is that conferences?
Yes, ma'am.
'Cause I know training's a lot more for, probably our most expensive training, I would imagine, is with the police department, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So as long as we monitor it, you know, do stuff, if there's anything that involves flights, you know, that we book those in such a way, no flights, nothing like that, okay? And on overtime, do, do y'all self-monitor overtime? How, I put a, where is most of the overtime used? And is it spread evenly among the officers? So one, I'm just, where, where is it mainly used?
It's usually used for city events, a lot of it, things at the mill, the road races, the parades, things like that, a lot of overtime, July fir, July third, all of that. Plus a shortage of staff, where we've been shorthanded some. We've had to fill in with our officers overtime, where we had people that had COVID, where we had the officer injured in line, injured in line of duty. All of those events basically cause overtime.
Okay.
And we do monitor it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the only other thing, and this is just more of a personal thing, are y'all real good about spreading it amongst the officers so that more of them can benefit if they want the overtime?
The thing that we have found is, when I first started policing, I worked everything. I worked every overtime job, everything. That's not true anymore. I mean, we have, we have off-duty jobs that are paying fifty and sixty dollars an hour, and we can't find officers that wanna work.
Wow.
It is the weirdest thing. Uh, and we would have never passed those up in our day, good lord. But now it's just gotten to where they don't wanna do anything but their time now. Obviously, we have some that will get overtime and, and take, and then we got some that, unless you make them do it, they're not gonna do it.
Well, I got a family member that's practically working themselves to death because there's such a shortage in the medical area.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're paying, once you're into overtime.
Oh, yeah.
And then if you'll show up in Atlanta at something for another four hours, they'll give you another on top of the time and a half. They'll give you extra bonus. They're, they're desperate.
Yeah, and then Uncle Sam sends them a thank you letter when they hit them with the tax.
I was gonna say, is, are those people receiving some of those child checks in the mail? I mean?
I, I don't have that answer, sir. I agree.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Okay, um, looks like your maintenance repair of equipment has jumped up more than it has been the last few years. What's going on?
It's just the equipment's more expensive to fix, all the parts are harder to get, take longer to get, things like that.
You've, up to this point in this year, you've only spent thirty-five hundred dollars, but you say you're gonna need twelve and a half thousand next year.
Yes, sir.
I'm pulling up the detail.
Do what, Sarah?
I'm pulling up the detail.
Sarah's bringing up details on that, sir.
So five thousand for Metropolitan, which is our portable radios. They do the service on that. We have Eryco who handles the interview room camera systems, watch guard. We have five thousand allocated for their in-car camera system maintenance and then diversified.
Those have aged a lot, so we're having more of that.
And we approved a whole lot of stuff this last council meeting as do with y'all.
Yes, sir, you did. Thank you for that. We appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Young?
I, I don't have anything specific, but I will note that Carrollton PD got a four and a half percent COLA and the SO got a thousand dollar bonus this summer.
Yes, oh, who's that?
I guess you need to work a little bit more on what we talked about.
Well, I, I kinda have been working on that because I, I told him a little bit of that.
Okay.
So we're, we're talking, we're discussing in-house what we wanna do because like I told the mayor earlier, we're losing people between the two-year and ten-year mark a lot. And, and Ms. McPherson was correct earlier when she said it wasn't just money. I mean, it's, it's definitely the culture, it's, it's the, the stigma in some ways for people to be a cop, things like that. But what I, what I do want you guys to understand is, we're asking them to do this job and, and they need to be able to make a living out of it by doing the job. out of it by doing the job, because if they're willing to sacrifice and do this job, which I knew going in, I was not gonna make a lot of money, I knew I was never gonna be a rich man doing this job, I love my job. I love being a cop, well, I always loved being a cop, so, but, but it's different, it's different for people. So, we would be willing to make some concessions to get that pay raise for the officers, to include possibly giving up a, a patrol car or two, just to make sure that the officers do get something.
Okay, we'll look at that.
So that's something for discussion.
All right, Mr. Mothman. All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
That's probably gonna be it for you. All right, let's go to the court. Well, that could be you. Uh, page seventy-three, Ms. McPherson.
And you may have explained this earlier, the jump in group insurance, is that just change again? And, um, this is page seventy-three.
Yes, so that's. So again, that's shifting from a per unit or per person cost dependent on what their election is, moving to more of a unit cost. So this department has two full-time people, that is what it costs citywide for two full-time people in insurance, so it looks like a big jump this year, but going forward, we will continue with that unit cost methodology, so it'll be, it'll be smoother over the future years.
Okay, anything else, Ms. McPherson?
Um, who's the travel for?
Court clerk, uh, and the judge, they have to have training.
Clerk and judge, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Hello?
Mr. Young.
I'm good.
Mr. Mothman. Yeah, this is one of the easiest ones, almost nothing really changed except the allocation on the group insurance, and of course, the workers' comp, wasn't much there. Thank you, sir. All right, Public Works, let's go to page seventy-five, Ms. McPherson.
Public Works Director, that's John, right?
No, this is what, this position we created, hoping for Levon in Douglas County.
Yes, okay.
We're still waiting on him to get well, he's not recovered.
Utility, I'm trying to get everybody's, because Bobby's been Public Works, and Pete's been Public Works, and I get mixed up on who's what, community development, not Public Works anymore. Yours is called utilities. Okay, here we go, okay, streets, building ma-, okay, Lev-, Levon.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm just trying to, Charlie's in there, okay.
Yes, so this department has potentially Levon, and has Charlie Davis as the deputy Public Works Director, and then there's an admin person.
Okay, uh, page seventy-seven, this is my only question for this department.
Wait a minute, we're not through with the public works.
Oh, did I jump?
Well, I, I'll let you roll that in, roads, streets, and bridges, it'd be fine, Bobby can do it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, how did we have years with no training? Because I know they even have to go to training for flag, I was just looking at, we have nothing allocated for training for years in there, don't they have to be certified for the traffic things and?
Yes.
They, they weren't, but they are now.
Okay, so that's why.
We have certified flagging, training, plus, uh, NPDES, um, land disturbance type stuff. Every, every single employee we have is, has got, has got the cards.
So that's the difference. Before, we didn't do any certificate, now we are, okay.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Carter, either under Public Works or Roads, Streets, and Bridges.
On seventy-five, page seventy-five, electricity, there's been none up till now, suddenly we're gonna have some. Who turned the power on?
So, we redid the, what used to be the distribution collection office in Avante to become the Public Works Office.
Okay.
So it's up on the second floor in Avante, so now they're gonna get charged for the electricity in that part of the building.
Okay.
Now they're paying their share. All right, Mr. Young.
I'm good on both.
All right, Mr. Mothman. All right, let's move on to Building and Fleet Maintenance. Is Nick here? You doing it? Okay. Uh, page eighty, Ms. McPherson.
Uh, I just said explain, when it said capital for the LED interior retrofit, um, is that just do everything in the city, or we're doing it as the bulbs burn out, or we'll save a lot more money if we get all these LEDs, so let's get it done?
We're actively doing it as we speak, all city buildings.
Just get it all done, and in the, in the long run, it's gotta save us money, electricity, I know they use so much less power.
We saved a bunch of money on buying all the bulbs at one time.
Okay.
And that's why we did it.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Carter.
That was the eighty-one thousand dollar thing, you bought a whole bunch of LEDs.
Yeah, that, that's part of the eighty-one thousand, the other part is, we, we have some roof repairs on Avante that, in the rain, you have to have an umbrella, so we've got some work to do over there.
Umbrellas are cheaper.
All right, Mr. Young.
I, I don't have anything.
All right, Mr. Mothman.
Nothing.
All right, let's get on over to Grounds Maintenance.
One other, just real quick.
Hold on, Ms. McPherson, you had something?
Do you want to tell us anything about the splash pad? I know that we're gonna have additional cost and maintenance on that, anything you think we need to know?
Um, not particularly, unless, unless Tom has something to add.
We did a lot of overtime.
Yeah, I mean, you got any specific questions?
Okay, um.
Well, we've, we've got, we've got Nick trained to actually be the technician on the splash pad as far as the, all the, the pumping equipment and, and all that stuff, so he's going, that's where the, that's where the overtime's gonna come in.
Okay, okay, because I saw that it was like a hundred percent, okay, all right, so, wait a second.
A lot of after-hours activity, or?
Yes, weekends, too.
They'll have to check it every Saturday and Sunday while it's open.
Mm-hmm.
There you go, that's what we needed to understand, I think. Okay, so that's where the overtime, there'll be weekend.
Right, he had to go to a special class to become certified, so, and he's the only one right now that is, so.
Yeah, we'll get a couple of other guys, too, also, but right now, he's it.
The kids are gonna love that, so are the parents.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Okay, let's, um, move on to Grounds Maintenance, page eighty-three, uh, Ms. McPherson.
Um, I put explain next to eight temps for eight months, that's because we're not getting the jail crews, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have, I'm not even gonna ask you, because I know we don't know when that's gonna change.
It, it is gonna change on the Douglas side. Assuming that we don't have another dip into COVID that shuts the jail, the Douglas jail is almost ready to give us inmates again.
When did they say that? It seems like.
But I mean, it could easily stop in reverse, you know? But if, but if we get inmates, my understanding is we'll be the only people to get inmates, because they're shut, so short-staffed that they can't provide a guard for what they would normally do, which would be, you know, for the county and maybe for Douglasville. We're gonna have to provide our own guard, which the chief's working on.
And that's why we might get them, because we could supply our own?
We need to continue to budget as though we're not gonna get them, though, because not only might that not happen, but it could change in the middle of it as well. So it's important that we, uh, are smart with, with the budget. You got any other questions, Ms. McPherson?
Uh, just, um, I put a question beside M and R grounds, up thirty percent. I mean, I figure even when things are shut down, grass is still growing and plants still go, uh, just.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a sale.
So it's up thirty percent.
One second.
Azaleas were on sale, I don't know.
So this includes, for instance, pine straw and mulch for all the grounds, including playgrounds, that's twenty-two thousand dollars. We need sod for Field Four, which is fifteen thousand, two thousand dollars for hydro seed, uh, we're looking to repair the V-Plex sign, twenty thousand, and then replacing gates on certain dugouts is another ten thousand dollars.
So, signs, just stuff we need to get done.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Okay, Community Service Office repairs at eleven thousand, but you're showing thirty-six thousand on the budget.
So, this is, um, additional, so this is roof repairs over the ground ma-, grounds maintenance part of the Avante, which is in the back, is fifteen thousand, and then we have eleven thousand for the Community Service Office, and I think we just added, I'm not sure.
Everybody's fuel is up.
I will have to get back to you on what the remaining amount is.
It looks like, that's a substantial, you know, if you add eleven to the sixteen or seventeen, still you jumped up quite a bit.
Yeah, I'm not really sure that that, some of that's not capital.
Okay.
And not maintenance.
That's all I had on that one.
All right, Mr. Young.
Okay.
Parks and, or, are we on Parks and?
No, not yet, uh, we're still on Grounds Maintenance, okay, so nothing. Mr. Mothman? All right, did you want to clarify something? Go ahead.
We did this in all the buildings, I asked Jennifer to add a little bit more in M and R buildings to all, every department that has a part of a building, um, so you should see it increased in all the departments, because we're constantly, we're trying to stay ahead of the M and R, um, so like, Tom, City Manager Budget has more for, um, City Hall, uh, between Nick and Grounds, we added more for Avante, so trying to be proactive with M and R, we're not, as you said earlier, Mr. Young, we've made a lot of progress, we don't want to revert.
Except Parks and Rec, M and R buildings went down.
Okay.
And that's what I was gonna say, I thought we moved on to Parks and Rec.
All right, well, we will now, so we're gonna go to page eighty-five, uh, Ms. McPherson.
Explain, uh, technical, uh, just under professional, top line, under services. It's not a ton of money, it's just, it just had a decent leap. We're doing something technical. Who, what?
Who's coming up?
Tracy, if you want to step up here. I think that is our, we switched to, we switched recre-, well, remember, we added our new recreation software, so I believe this is our annual.
Annual fee.
Yes.
Okay, rec software. So that'll be there every year like that, okay. That's so people can do things online, what we.
Yes, ma'am.
To make it easier, yeah.
All right, Mr. Carter.
Okay, um, and M and R grounds, we spent twenty-two, you're over that, and last year, we're up to about sixteen this year, and suddenly we're going to fifty-one and a half. What's going on with that?
M and R grounds, um, so we have.
Do you have it with you?
I have what we submitted.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't know what you took out, but, um.
Fifty-one thousand four hundred proposed.
So you have twenty-three thousand for weed control.
Thirty-five for some additional playground mulch, top off, not for new construction or major construction, but if we just need to top it off in some areas. We have eight thousand in there for, uh, trash receptacles, picnic tables. Actually, we moved that eight thousand to sixty-one twenty, so that's in our athletics.
All right, so, um, we have Nick, building and building maintenance, we have, uh, Mark over Grounds Maintenance.
Wait a minute, this is not building, this is just M and R grounds, what's the building item above it?
Yes, I, I'm sorry, I'm explaining, we, and Charlie Davis, they get together with Tom frequently, uh, throughout the year to figure out what M and R projects we have, again, trying to stay on top of things, be proactive with our maintenance and repair. So I can see that we added several things after Tracy made her submission, so I think it was from our discussions with Charlie, Nick, Mark, and Tom. Um, so for instance, repairing the big pavilion at Goldust, we've budgeted that at ten thousand dollars. Digging up and resetting the football goalpost sockets in concrete at V-Plex, that's six hundred dollars. Um, rock signs need to be rebuilt and sign faces need replacing, that's forty-five hundred dollars. Repairing park entrance sign work at Goldust, that's eighteen hundred dollars, so, I mean, we have specific projects lined up in.
Okay.
M and R grounds.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Young.
I'm good.
Mr. Mothman.
I'm good.
All right, Ms. McPherson, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, aren't we having something with fields with drainage issues? Is some of that being addressed in here, too? Didn't we have a problem, or is that something that's not getting done this year? Everything stays wet forever, or?
Well, we, we are having one field laser graded and, and applying sod where needed, just so, so we can see the improvement that it makes and how quickly we can rebound from a rain, uh, event, but we, we did submit some capital funds, I don't think those, uh, made it this round, so maybe we can have some additional discussion about that.
Okay, and, um, this is just so we'll understand it, the new purple book format, we're doing something new with that, what, what are we doing?
We, we have.
It's not the money, I'm just curious.
Yeah, we had the purple book that I think was created by the Park staff at some point, uh, before my, uh, you know, getting here. We just want to take that and make it more of, you know, user-friendly, we want to be able to do it as a flip book, so we can put it on our internet, Facebook, and, uh, you know, advertise our activities and our events a little more efficiently, and so the new person that we hire would certainly be, uh, if that gets approved, that person will be instrumental in helping us get that done.
So now, instead of just a hard copy, y'all have the same thing online where somebody can look through it, so that's part of it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know, because I thought we should know what's going on with that, okay. Um, and Sarah, this might be yours, because I think it goes back, and I forgot, uh, the bank fees and all, remind me, I wrote myself a note, remind me why we're paying for this. I remember there was the discussion about when people pay online as to whether they should pay that little extra couple of dollars.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
We talked about that, I want to say a year and a half ago, maybe two, year and a half ago. Uh, asked the council if you wanted us to pass those credit card fees on to other, to the citizens, so we see those types of fees here at Recreation. So we, we have to pay, um, like a maintenance fee for, up in the technical line for our software, but then we also are paying these fees, um, I don't know, two to three percent probably on each transaction. So council decided not, well, we are not able to pass those fees on to utility customers, so we have to absorb that, and you'll see that in customer service. Council decided not to pass it on to Recreation, the only part we, uh, pass it on to was the Community Development, and that went into effect this summer, so now we are passing a two perc-, the two percent, um, service fee on to our, anybody that's paying in Community Development, so permits, water and sewer taps, um, mechanical permits, any of those types of fees are being charged, that's being passed on.
We're doing it there legally, and I had forgotten that, thank you for the reminder, legally, we cannot with utilities.
Correct.
So there's no choice in that. We do in Community Service, at this point, we have chosen to absorb it in rec.
Correct.
Okay, so unless we decide to change that, okay, all right.
All right, so Tracy, stay right there, let me, so what we needed to do was also include athletics, uh, programs and events, and the library, uh, in, in any of this discussion for Tracy, so let me give y'all a minute to flip through, uh, each of those, uh, subsections of this part of the budget, and then I'll start, because I don't want to put you right on the spot unless you're ready. If you are, you can start when you're ready, Ms. McPherson.
Does that include senior center?
Yes, sir, senior center as well.
Hey Tracy, who monitors the overtime for Parks and Rec?
Uh, I would monitor that.
I'm sure we rack up some at least on July third.
We have, we have a little bit on the third, and we also have some with our athletics. When we, um, have an organization that comes in and hosts an event, they actually pay, uh, for us to provide a staff member to help out with trash and restrooms and that kind of thing, so that's really kind of a wash. Um, they pay, they pay that directly to the city, and then the employee gets it in, in the overtime.
Okay.
They don't get directly paid.
And we did pay us, okay, that's out, because we, I'm thinking that admin budget, the ten thousand, was that for the consult, the technical, was that for our consultant with the splash pad that's now out? It was in there and it was removed.
That's, so, you know, we, we've just recently created the, the sixty-one-ten budget, so when, it was actually Vicki that had brought the proposal for the software, and that was before we had a sixty-one-ten, so it was paid out of sixty-one-twenty. I mean, we didn't get it till Tracy got here, but it was originally approved by the council in sixty-one-twenty, so we left it there.
That's what that was, okay.
All right, you have anything else?
Just that, it always bugs me that we still have to rent property from the railroad. Even Parks and Rec, which parts of Parks and Recreation has, is it across the street from the mill? We have rented.
Is it Prospectors Park?
No, it's the, it's called a railroad park.
Oh, well, I don't know anything about that.
It's across from there.
Right out here.
Right out here, okay, okay. I, yeah, I kind of forgot about that. Pay them forever, that's all I have in Parks and Rec.
All right, Mr. Carter?
Okay, on eighty-eight, you talk about the pickleball course, are those already completed, or up and running, or when do we plan to get those going?
We are, what this, what these funds are, is to just stripe our existing tennis courts.
Okay.
So they'll be permanent in sense, but they'll be temporary in another sense.
You're converting tennis courts to pickleball courts? Okay.
Not designated pickleball, you can do tennis or pickleball, you'll have two sets of lines out there.
All right, and then on the senior center, you have, suddenly have fifty-five hundred dollars in there for new programs, what is that about?
Well, we are looking at having our senior center become more active, it's one of the things that talked about upon my arrival here, and it's very important, I think, that we have an active center, and it's not very active right now. Of course, we're on the tail end of COVID, and we're trying to return from there, but we want to have some folks come in and do some things to get our seniors up and moving, and doing some additional things with them, and I think that'll help the city's image in that regard, and certainly help our citizens as well.
I'll just add to that, that I've had at least a couple people approach me just to mention, there is money out there to help with the senior programs, both the lady at the birches, I don't remember her position, her, and maybe some contact with Carrollton, I know they bring in money, sometimes through some other grants.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's out there, yeah, let's.
Yeah, Tara and I are planning on meeting, going in to visit some senior centers, not necessarily next door, but just some good prominent centers around the area that we can get some ideas from, see how they structure their staff, see if they have a lot of outside contract employees that come in and do different things, or whether it's all in-house, and we also want to talk about the food service element, because that's a, that's a big expense, you know, for us right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Young?
Just on the senior center, it says the van doesn't run, and we've got five thousand dollars marked down for vehicle maintenance, is that, is there an end-of-life concern there on that van?
There is, I think Nick is real hesitant to put any more money in that, but that's an expensive vehicle, so we opted just to put five thousand in for preventive maintenance and anything, it was just in and out of the shop, so hopefully, we won't need that, other than some minor things, but it is on the end of its life, absolutely.
All right, Mr. Montahan?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. All right, we're going to move on to enterprise funds. Let me see if you got a bunch of notes down there on these. No?
Mayor, do you want to take a quick break?
Yeah, I was hoping we could finish, but.
I've only got about three more tabs, I don't know how everybody else is.
Let's take about five minutes, y'all want to take five minutes, let's do a five-minute recess.